Good evening. It's six o'clock and we'll call to order the Thursday, August 15th, the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the Town of Florence to order. We'll begin with roll call. Cliff, are you doing that this evening?
I got it. Chairman Frost?
Present.
Commissioner Pro?
Present.
Commissioner Lehman?
Present.
Commissioner DeRosa? Commissioner Woolley? We have corn.
Thank you very much, and we have a new face on the stand up here. We appreciate Jeff Woolley joining us. A little bit of prior understanding of him, he brings some good experience from previous service on this commission, so we're welcoming him aboard with us. And with that, please stand Commissioner Lehman is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands unnationed, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and I should also recognize our Vice Mayor Mendoza is here with us and our town manager and town attorney and community development director. So we appreciate this wealth of talent being here with us this evening. We'll start out with a call to the public. Call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Individual commission members may respond to criticisms made, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the commission shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. And with that, is there anyone here from the public that would like to address the commission this evening? Anyone online?
We have one online.
Okay.
Good evening Chairman Frost and Commissioners, this is Keith Eaton. I just wanted to take a second to thank you for your service and what you do. I look so forward to working with you guys soon. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
New mayor?
And that's it. Okay. We will close the call to the public and go to Agenda Item Number Five, which is Discussion Approval or Disapproval of Minutes from the June 20th Meeting. Commission members, any edits, comments, corrections?
Nothing.
With that, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve the minutes from meeting of June 20th.
Second.
Here was a motion by Commissioner Pro and a second by Commissioner Lehman for approval of the minutes from June 20th. All in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Thank you. It's unanimous. New business. We have a presentation of a design, of a design review from Florence Copper, PZ 24-21. There's no action on this. This is for discussion and a presentation. We're all looking forward to that. It's an exciting project. So with that, AG, are you leading out on this one?
Yes, Andrew's setting up the PowerPoint. I'd like to introduce Sophie Dessart, who's going to provide an overview and presentation of the project that they're working on at Florence Copper.
Good evening Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Sophie Dessart, and I am the manager of Communications and Public Affairs at Florence Copper. I also am a proud resident here in Florence, and I look forward to presenting a Florence Copper project update to you today. We do have several members of our team in the audience tonight, including a member from the Planning Center who helped us put together the design slides in this presentation, and we'll present those. So starting off, I do have to flash on the screen. Basically, don't take anything that I say as stock advice, considering the fact I am the manager of Communications and Public Affairs and not the manager of Finance. Really don't recommend taking anything I say as stock advice. So speaking about what we're going to discuss this evening, we are going to start with an overview of Florence Copper, talking a bit about our project, our timeline for operations. We are then going to transition into speaking about our commercial facilities construction. And then we're going to end off the presentation, talking a little bit about our economic impact and the efforts that we have made to ensure the community is informed about our project, including this presentation here tonight. At any time during the presentation, I am open to questions, but I also will leave time at the end for questions. So starting out with a general overview of Florence Copper, we are of course the copper producer located right across the street from Post Inbut Mountain on Hunt Highway, and that is a picture of our operation that we'll talk about a little bit later in this Starting out with our site layout, our site property boundary is in orange on this slide right here. And this, I like to show this map because this shows where we are in relationship to the Town of Florence, and then also to the Anthem at Merrill Ranch master community. And sometimes people do get confused about where exactly we are located, and so what we always tell people is, as I said, right across the street from Post Inbut Mountain. Zooming in on our property, we have just over 1,300 acres on our site. That is a combination of state and private land, so 160 acres is state line and the remainder is private land. And in blue, that is our resource block. So that is where the copper that we are accessing is located. And as you can see, we know very well where exactly the copper we have on our site is located, and that gets to the fact that we actually have an extensive history on this property with copper development, as I'll speak about on this slide. So one question that we do commonly get at Florence Copper is, when exactly did you discover copper on the Florence Copper property? And the answer is actually 1969. So legend has it, there was a geologist from a circle, they were doing exploration in the area, and they saw evidence of a copper deposit on the mountain across the street, Post Inbut Mountain. When they did additional exploration, they found the copper deposit on our property. Now, in the 1970s, Conoco looked at mining the property using traditional mining methods. So they constructed two 700-foot shafts on their property, and they realized that the geology in Florence is very unique. It's a highly fractured, highly saturated, and highly porous deposit. Those hydrogeologic conditions do not lend themselves well to a traditional mining method like an open pit or an underground mining operation. Interestingly enough, if they had been able to move forward with a traditional mining operation, they would have completely taken the mountain across the street out, and the Anthem community would now be tailing. So it would look like a very different Florence. But thankfully, they realized we have very unique geology. They weren't able to move forward with that method of producing copper. Now, in the 1990s, the possibility of what is called in-situ copper recovery technology was looked at. In very simple terms, we actually extract copper from the ground in liquid form through a series of wells, and I'll talk a little bit more about that process later on in this presentation. But with that, in the 1990s, BHP Copper actually did a pilot test of in-situ copper recovery on the site. They had 67 wells. They proved the safety, the effectiveness, the environmental responsibility of the in-situ copper recovery process, and they were all set to move forward. But in 2000, the price of copper took a nosedive, BHP pulled out, and the property was actually acquired by Merrill Ranch Investments, so the same company that developed the Anthem at Merrill Ranch community. When 2008 and 2009 hit, of course, we know very well, those were not good years for the housing market. With the bubble and the crash, Harrison Merrill had to sell the land in order to get funding, and so he sold it to Curis Resources, who started putting in place the members of the team that would bring us to where we are today. In 2014, Curis was acquired by our parent company, Tassico Mines out of Canada, and that started kind of the advanced permitting of the project. So kind of fast forwarding today, we like to say that Florence Copper is a proven success. And the reason that we say that is where exactly we are in our project operations. So we are finishing up a successful production test facility. Basically, we did a smaller scale version of the operation that we will do in commercial operations in order to prove again the safety, the effectiveness, the environmental responsibility of the in-situ copper recovery process. And we've done that. We've actually produced over 1 million pounds of copper on the Florence Copper site, right across from Post Inbut Mountain here in Florence. And this picture on the screen, that is the first copper cathode that rolled off the line in 2019. So a very proud moment for our team. So as I mentioned, we are developing in two phases. So Phase One was that successful production test facility, producing over 1 million pounds of copper. And Phase Two is where we are at now. So we are currently expanding into commercial operations. So in 2023, we received our final major federal permit to expand into commercial operations, and we're now at the point where we're mobilizing to, for the construction of our commercial production facility. So one of the commissioners, as he was walking in, mentioned to me, he sees a lot of cranes on our site, a lot more activity, and so that's really due to the fact that we are currently under construction to expand into commercial operations. With that, we do expect our first copper cathode from our commercial facilities to roll off the line at the end of next year, end of 2025. And over the course of 22 years, we expect to have an annual average production capacity of 85 million pounds per year. So I've said it a couple times, in-situ copper recovery, and I explained it very, very briefly, and maybe you are already aware of the process, but for those who aren't, I'm just going to briefly talk about how that process works. So first of all, I always do get the surprise, I was just talking with someone today, and they said, I would never have known that you've produced over 1 million pounds of copper on that site in Florence. It doesn't look like your traditional mining operation. There's no giant pit in the ground, there's no haul trucks, there's no blasting, and that's really a huge benefit of the in-situ copper recovery process. This slide shows it pretty well. If you go out to our site, it basically looks like an empty field, and you have some pieces of equipment sticking out of the ground. And with that, we do have a very small environmental footprint. Because we don't do any blasting, we're not hauling millions of tons of rock, we do emit less carbon and less dust compared to a traditional mining operation. We also use significantly less energy and less water compared to a traditional mining operation. And then for this commission, I think this is something of special note, when we're done with our project, we're able to reuse this land, we're able to pull up the wells, cap them, and then this land really looks how it was when we started. So it could be redeveloped into housing, into agriculture, really whatever the community priorities are at that time. So it's a very exciting opportunity for Florence in the sense that we're able to get this copper metal, and when we're done, and we've had that economic uplift, that copper metal being produced, we're still able to use the land again. So speaking to the process itself, we're going to start out in our in-situ recovery area on the lower left-hand side part of the slide. And so that is our in-situ recovery area, or our well field, as we call it. And in our well field, we drill down into the copper oxide zone, which is about 400 to 1,200 feet below ground, and into what we would call an injection while we travel, a lightly acidic solution. It's about on par in acidity with a household vinegar into that copper oxide zone, and that lightly acidic solution actually dissolves the copper in the rock into liquid form, and it becomes a part of that solution. We then are able to pull that liquid copper-rich solution back above ground for processing through a series of what we call recovery wells in a closed-loop system. Once we have that liquid copper-rich solution back above ground, we travel it in an above-ground pipeline to our solvent extraction and electro-winning, or SXW plant. Once it's there, we add an organic to it. It goes through a series of agitators and into basically what looks like bathtubs. And over the course of seven days, we actually use electricity to pull the copper molecules from the solution and plate it onto a steel anode sheet, almost like plating chrome on a bumper. After those seven days are up, you have your fully formed copper cathode sheet, basically looks like a big rectangle of copper. We're able to strip that off the steel anode sheet. The steel anode sheet gets recycled back into the process, and you have the final product that we produce at Florence Copper, which is that LME Grade A copper cathode. I always do get the question, once you've pulled that copper from the solution, what do you do with the solution? We're actually able to recycle it back into our process, and because that solution is mostly water-based, we're actually recycling the water that we use there. And so that's why you see we use significantly less water compared to a traditional mining operation. In fact, we were finalists for two environmental awards from Arizona Forward in 2022 because of this process. Aside from that, the only thing I haven't talked about on this slide is, we do pull up more of our liquid copper-rich solution than we're putting in in order to create that closed-loop system, so that extra solution has to go somewhere, and it goes to one of our ponds after it's been neutralized with lime. I am now going to transition to Daniel Bradshaw at the Planning Center, and he's going to talk a little bit about what our commercial facilities construction is going to look like.
Thank you Sophie, and Chairman and Commission, thank you for allowing me to speak here today as well. So I am a principal landscape architect for a company called the Planning Center. We're based in Tucson, Arizona, and we've been tasked with preparing a design review application for the site, and we've done that with additional consultants. StanTech Engineering has been instrumental in that process, providing civil engineering services. Okay, so this slide here represents the existing conditions of the site. So it's an aerial image, a current aerial image, and what you see there in red denotes the boundary of the project. It's about 1,300 acres. And if you look at that, it's very clear that there have been agricultural activities on this property for a very long time. As mentioned, there's also been mining operations on the site since approximately 1969. The site itself, as mentioned, is just south of Hunt Highway. You're all familiar with the area there. I imagine you drive by quite frequently. There are a number of facilities on the site right now. As Sophie mentioned, there are a number of production test facilities, which are kind of a micro scale of what's going to be built here in the near future that will produce copper at a commercial rate. But there are also additional facilities that you've probably witnessed as you've drive by Hunt Highway. There are administrative offices and warehouses along the road there, and I don't know if you can follow my cursor there, and you can see where those are located. Just west of that there is actually the entrance, the main entrance to the site off of Hunt Highway. And if you look just west of that, there's actually a stand of vegetation there. That's quite significant. There's some water that moves through the area there, and there are a lot of native mesquites and other plant species there that provide a lot of screening. That's important because when I toggle to the next slide, I want you to see what the proposed conditions will look like. And as I think you'll notice, there's very little change to the overall project site. So I'm going to toggle here to the next slide. And you can see that really, the improvement area is associated with this space here, where you have the solvent extraction and electro-winning facility, and then just south of that where you have a pond as well. Now, as mentioned before, one of the primary reasons why this is located where it's at is that it is actually hidden behind some significant vegetation. As we go through these slides here, we'll actually point out that in addition to the existing plant material here, we do propose adding additional screening along Hunt Highway, and I'll talk more about that in a moment. But as mentioned, not only do you have these new facilities here, but you have the existing facilities that will remain, and the main entrance will be improved to provide some additional support capacity for additional vehicles and parking. This slide here is just meant to represent some of the work that's been done to produce technical drawings for town review. I think you have a number of additional drawings in that Agenda packet with you tonight, but this here is just the cover of what we refer to as the landscape plan. And what it shows here is it shows, in the center of this drawing here, the solvent extraction and electro-winning facility with the existing vegetation to north of it. And if you see those orange areas there, up just off the highway, those are areas that will be revegetated or enhanced with additional landscape. That landscape will be native landscape. So nothing that's proposed for construction and landscape along Hunt Highway will be foreign or exotic plant material, but will all be native plants. And I would imagine that in this case, it will be primarily mesquite trees, creosote, bursage, a variety of local wildflowers, grasses, and the like. What would that look like then? I guess that's the next question. This next slide here represents two photo simulations. The one on top represents a view towards the southwest as you're approaching the main entrance to the project site. So what you can see in the background here, if you can follow my cursor, are some of the new proposed facilities. Those are depicted in a beige tone here, and that's accurate. The paint colors that have been proposed for this project are desert tones. But what you're also seeing in front here are enhanced landscape, where maybe there aren't trees at the moment adjacent to this entry, but there will be as native trees are planted. In addition to the trees, however, a hydroseed mix, which is a seed mix slurry featuring native plants, will also be installed to any areas that are currently devoid of vegetation or disturbed, so that you'll have understory under those trees as well. And if you look at the image on the bottom there, this is an image looking back towards the southeast from Hunt Highway. Once again, this is a landscape enhancement or improvement area where additional trees will be added, so you can see the screen here, as well as understory through that seed mix. And with that, I'll turn the time back over to Sophie.
Thank you so much, Daniel. And to finish out this presentation, I do want to talk a little bit about the economic impact that we will have locally and throughout the state. So the L. William Seidman Research Institute at Arizona State University actually completed an economic impact study on Florence Copper, and this was published in March of this year. And they found that over the course of project operations, we expect to contribute about $4.3 billion in economic activity to the state of Arizona. That includes $2.5 billion in Pinal County, and if we really want to go right to Florence, that would be 100, over $115 million in tax revenues alone to the Town of Florence. Going beyond just speaking about tax revenues or economic activity, I also can speak to local hiring. So with that, we do expect to support an annual average of approximately 820 jobs in the state of Arizona over the course of our project. And looking at the Town of Florence and Pinal County, I'm very proud to say that, if you spoke to me last year, spring of last year, we had about 35 full-time employees. We're now up to over 70, and we expect to hire about 90 or so more people in the next year. With that, the really thing that we're very proud about as a project is the majority of people that we have hired in 2023 and 2024 have been local Pinal County residents. So we really do prioritize and are committed to local hiring and local procurement as well, buying from our local businesses. So obviously, you all mentioned, as you drive by, you see a lot of activity, and so people may have questions. And so what exactly have we done to educate the local community about what we're doing as a project? And so we do have a very robust site tour program. Over 3,220 people have toured the Florence Copper site. At this point in time, because we are under construction for commercial operations, we are holding off on site tours for the general public, just because, you know, it is an active construction site. But at the same time, we still want to make sure people know what we're doing as a project, and if they have questions, be able to ask them. So we did hold an open house in April of 2024 at the Florence Women's Club here in downtown Florence. The picture on this slide is a picture of that open house, and several, many members of the local community came. Even our Vice Mayor did show up, so thank you very much, Vice Mayor. And aside from that, we do have, we do offer presentations to interested groups, including interested neighborhoods. So a couple weeks ago, I was at the Caliente Casa del Sol RV Park giving a project update. We do have planned in Sun City Anthem an educational class in November upcoming, and really, any interested group is always welcome to reach out and schedule a presentation with us. We also do have a website, florencecopper.com. On that website, we have a blog where we post updates. We also do have a newsletter that people can sign up for on our website. We post updates on social media. We do presentations like this to you here in August. And if anyone does have any questions or feedback for us, we do have a dedicated feedback line. There is an email, as shown on the screen. There's a contact form on our website, and there also is a dedicated phone number that people can call if they have any questions or comments. And then finally, to end out, I do want to highlight this. I am a resident of Florence, so this is really the, my favorite part of this presentation, my favorite part of our project. And that is the fact that we are, we live in this area, we're dedicated to supporting it. So we do have a charitable foundation. Since 2013, we've donated over $129,000 to local nonprofits and initiatives in this area. In fact, just yesterday, I was up donating $1,000 to Paladin Sports Outreach. We also do have a scholarship program, and that was started in 2011, and we've awarded over $91,000 in scholarships to local students, including $11,000 just this year. We do also cherish our partnerships with the Town of Florence. So in July of this year, we did, we were honored to be able to collaborate with the town and contribute $50,000 to help renovate the parks, Heritage Park playgrounds, with a special focus on adding accessibility features for children with disabilities and special needs. We also partner with the town in the sense that we are part of the Adopt a Road program with the town, and so if you drive down Hunt Highway and see a bunch of people with safety vests on cleaning up the highway, that is our team. We do that on a quarterly basis. And then we just always treasure the opportunity for partnerships with the town. So we also do partner very frequently with the Community Services Department, for instance, with town events like the Fourth of July Freedom Fest or upcoming Florence Makes a Difference Day. And to end out, I do want to say once again, I am a resident of Florence, so I'm very excited to see, we, this has all been done before we have reached commercial operations. So I always like to say personally that I'm so incredibly excited to see how we can grow our positive impact in the local community as we do reach that important milestone and move into commercial operations. With that, I want to thank you so much for the privilege of your time tonight, and if you have any questions, I am more than open to respond to them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very informative presentation and a very, very good information-heavy packet. We appreciate that. Commission members, any questions, clarification? Yes, please.
Excuse me, I'm just coming back to planning and zoning. I was out on a lot of the copper stuff, but my one question is, I like the design and the whole concept, but with increased commercial activity, we're going to see an increase in traffic on Hunt Highway. What is the copper projects' plan to do with Hunt Highway? I mean, obviously helping the town.
Absolutely. That's a fantastic question. As a resident of the local area, I always think about traffic, especially traffic on Hunt Highway. And so with that, we obviously are committed to responsible economic growth here in Florence, and so we did commission a traffic study that has been shared with the town. And thankfully, that traffic study did show that we have no major impacts on local traffic flows, and that really gets to proactive actions that have been taken by the projects. So first of all, we are a 24-stop and operation, and so we do shift work. So with that, not everyone is commuting into the site at, you know, 8:00 AM on a Monday morning. We have, you know, a team that starts with a 6:00 AM meeting. I was actually there earlier this morning bringing the breakfast. So we do work in staggered shifts, and we are very mindful to schedule those at off-peak, at off-peak times. We also do the same with deliveries. So if we're having deliveries for site to site, we, whenever possible, schedule those at off-peak times. We're very much proactive in managing traffic to site, and that showed in the results of our traffic study.
Thank you.
Commissioner?
Okay, I've got a few questions too. I noticed there's an alternate entrance on the west, northwest part of the property. What type of off-lanes or things like that are you going to propose on Hunt Highway?
No, that's a very good question. And in fact, we have our manager of capital projects here, and he has been very, working very closely with StanTech to design that. So I think he could perhaps provide a little bit of coloration on that question.
And please, please, please give us your name and affiliation for the record.
I'm Josh Nelson, I'm manager of capital projects for Florence Copper, I'm project manager for the construction of the commercial facility. So the western entrance, the proposed western entrance, at this stage, we don't have the design finalized. We intend to work with the town and take feedback and design in the features that are necessary. are necessary to match the safe traffic patterns.
Is this considered an emergency entrance, or will it be used regularly?
It would be primarily focused on supporting ongoing drilling activities. So as Sophie talked about, the wells that we use for copper extraction, those are developed continuously throughout the life of the facility. So it's not just wells that we drill now. Every year, we continue drilling and expanding out that well field. And that western entrance allows us to split the traffic away from the single entrance that we have now, to reduce the intensity of the turing and the vehicles entering and exiting by spreading them across the two entrances. And allows us operationally to focus our traffic to the two main areas of the facility, which are the copper production area, where we're doing the extraction, solvent extraction, electro-winning facility in the east, and the drilling program, which is more akin to construction activities. And we're able to separate those two and manage them separately.
Okay, is there, is there going to be a guard shack at that end, too?
Yes, it's in the, that's what we have in the design right now.
I really like the idea that you've got a big entrance that you're expanding so that the trucks don't back up onto the highway as they're exiting at the main gate. Which direction do most of the trucks taking the copper plates off, which are big flatbeds strapped down, are they going to go east to 79 and north or south?
It's, it really depends on who the customer is and what the trucking company's routes are. That's not something that we have direct control over. It depends what the destination is, what traffic patterns are. There aren't governing or consistently governing traffic patterns leaving the site. It really depends.
As long as they don't go up Felix, we're okay. All right.
As someone who lives off of Felix Road, I completely understand that desire. Yes, but Felix Road was one of the roads considered in the traffic study, and we considered both current conditions, construction conditions, and then also future conditions. I believe we looked at 2038 as the year for future conditions. And so all of those were considered, and Felix Road was part of that traffic study. And again, we did show no major impacts to traffic flows.
As you expand the well field, will you be expanding to the south? Are you staying within these parameters that you showed us?
So with the expansion of the well field, if you looked at the, let me see if I can pull this back up, the PowerPoint. If we look at the resource block there, that is really the area that our well field is going to be located. Oh, and it went out again. But that is the area that it'll be located? I don't know what it's doing. Oh, there. Someone else took over for me. But yes, so that area, that resource block, that is where our well field is going to primarily be concentrated, because that's where the copper is located. And as Josh mentioned, we don't develop the well field in one fell swoop. The very interesting thing about our project is because we use such a, we use such a small land space for our well field, we're able to develop that in a grid-like pattern. So today's injection wells become tomorrow's recovery wells, and we're able to expand in a grid-like pattern across site. So with that, when we reach, say, year 22, there will be a year negative one well field block that will basically have been able to have closed out. And with that, we're allowed to do concurrent reclamation over the course of our project operations. So another real benefit of the in-situ copper recovery process.
As you decommission parts of the well field, and it's a great process to be in situ, so you don't interfere with the surface and you can return it back to its original and then have things on that. Have there been discussions with ADOT about the North-South Expressway?
So that is something that obviously I think we're all aware of. There is that possibility, and they have, they're in, I believe, tier two now with that north-south corridor. We have submitted comments with regards to that, just to let them know that we are there as a project and make sure they're aware of our operations. At the same time, I think we all know very well, when it comes to funding roadway expansion and transportation, that is a very long process. And so I can't speak to their plans or when exactly they expect to get funding for that. But I mean, if I am around to see the north-south corridor come through, I will be very impressed.
The, the electro-winning requires a lot of power from, I assume APS?
Yes, we have a dedicated substation on our site from APS.
And what kind of high-tension lines are you going to be putting in across the property? Is anything going to be crossing Hunt Highway in addition to what we already have?
That is, I see Josh shaking his head no, so that is a no.
All right, I think I've asked enough questions.
No, I appreciate all your questions. Thank you so much.
Mr. Pro.
Yeah, I'm, once again, really impressed with your presentation. The questions that I had have already been asked, so I look forward to you being good community citizens. I like the way you've outlined that.
Thank you so much. And I do want to extend the invite that if any of you would ever like to come out and take a tour of Florence Copper, you are more than welcome to come and see our site. We'll just have to, you know, make sure we work around construction.
Great, thank you.
And I have a couple of questions to pose to you as well. One of them, when you outline in your exhibits, and you talk about upcoming buildings, one of those is building 651 PKG, an equipment enclosure, shipping container housing, the fire foam services. And I have this thing ringing in the back of my head called PFOS, which fire foam is notoriously, hopefully this is.
We have already considered that, and I can assure you that there is not going to be PFOS in the system. Speaking as someone who spent part of her childhood in Michigan and lived near a tannery, where I definitely agree PFOS is a major question. And yes, we've considered that. Thank you.
The gift that keeps on giving. And additional improvements include fire hydrants throughout the planned area of the development. Are you going to have your own onsite fire system?
Yes, we have a dedicated fire system onsite.
Okay. And we're coordinating that with the fire department so that we?
Yes, we've been working very closely with the town of Florence Fire Department and the, and the whole team here at the town of Florence. They've been absolutely wonderful.
Great. I lived through a situation where our fire department had a certain nozzle specification for the hydrants, and when other fire departments would come in to assist us, it didn't work. So.
Yes.
Good, okay, very good.
We've actually had the entire, every crew at the Florence Fire Department has toured our site, and we've also had the South Florence Volunteer Fire Department even out to tour our site as well.
That's awesome. You say here that rainfall is collected and stored. If you store it long enough, you start growing vectors, mosquitoes. So I'm assuming that you're going to do something to get rid of it. Is that reuse it, dry wells?
And we do actually have our manager of EHS here, Mark Severson, and I feel like he can speak very well to that question.
Well, Mr. Chairman, Mark Severson, Environmental Health and Safety. We currently have stormwater ponds that are lined for this particular project. To that point, we would be taking the waters out of that and putting it into one of our larger facility ponds that's permitted by ADEQ, the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality. So obviously, we want to leave room for any future water or rainstorms that come along, because we know how these rainstorms come. So I don't think there'd ever be a time where we would have massive amounts of water sitting in the ponds to have vector growth.
I know, I know from driving by, you agitate your other ponds, so that makes it where mosquitoes won't grow, but stormwater, 36 hours, those little boogers start growing. So we just want to be, want to be cognizant of that, so.
Fair enough. With that.
And then I, I also live out in that direction, and I go down and walk the canals and whatnot. And of course, you come to your property, and you can't walk the canal anymore. But I know in our general plan, one of the things we looked real hard at was a trail system that would be beneficial for the community. Will there ever be a time when a trail system, which they typically like to follow the canals because it's just a nice right-of-way, will there ever be a time when a trail can be built through your property along that North Canal right-of-way?
I think that's something we could potentially consider. Obviously, we'd have to work with Bureau of Indian Affairs and SKEP to make sure that that would be a allowed option. But obviously, we're also concerned about safety in the well field, so we certainly want to make sure that, we do have farmers going in and out of our property. We have construction going on in well field development. So I think we'd want to take all this into consideration, but certainly would be supportive of something like that if we could make it work.
It's just, it's just part of the general plan. One of the, one of the thoughts in general plan is for the community to have a nice trail system so that people can get out and bike and walk and enjoy when it's not 110 outside, so.
Right, absolutely.
And I think you hit all my other questions already this evening, so I just had those few to add. So we appreciate it, and I think you've heard from all of us that we appreciate you coming and making this presentation to us this evening. We're, we're looking for exciting things, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you.
Okay, with that, Director's Report. AJ?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members, I wanted to mention a few things. Staff has been working very diligently on developing a recommendation for public notice, something we've talked about here over the course of the last couple of months. When that recommendation is complete, we'll be working with Attorney Matisse to make sure that language works for him, and we'll be making a presentation to you at a later date. Happy to report, staff has been very busy working with a number of developers, looking to plat subdivisions here in town. And I expect here, sooner than later, that these, these, these meeting agendas will, will fill up once again with people looking to, to develop here in the town of Florence. One of the committees that we've formed is something called the Technical Advisory Committee, a committee that has been established by ordinance. But forming it, I think, will be a tremendous benefit to this commission in terms of review with town leadership, developing our staff reports, and really receiving comment from all of the departments here in town. And that committee and its work will only strengthen our ability to report to you as Planning and Zoning Commission. And so we're really looking forward to that work. We've had a couple organizational meetings to date, and this past Tuesday, we had a pre-application meeting looking at preliminary plat for Anthem Merrill Ranch that would be to the east of Felix Road. So their work is underway. And, but again, just to close, we have a lot of work ahead of us as a department, as a commission, and I'm looking forward to that work with you.
Super, thank you very much. Call to the commission. Commission members, current events?
Nothing here.
I don't think there's anything happening really in the community right now with all of the, all of the heat right now. We'll start picking it up when fall comes and cooler weather comes. With that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move the adjourn.
Have a motion from Commissioner Lehman to adjourn with a second from Commissioner Woolley. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.